I call to order these Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting to order at 6:37. Let them know that this quorum is present. Public comments, non-agenda items, public comments, white cards. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda related topics for the length of time not to exceed three minutes per person. Agenda item, public comments, yellow card will be taken from the audience on non-agenda. And agenda items combined for the length of time not to exceed five minutes total per person on any item except for public hearing comments. On the public hearing, items must be made when the items come to, come before the board commission committee and not to exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken by the board commission committee during public comments on non-agenda items. To address the board, to address the board commission committee, please complete the white or yellow card presented to the city staff and designate prior to the meeting. This evening we have one at the moment, Mr. Robert Bataille.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Nice to be back here. Uh, this is my first time back at a city council meeting, planning meeting. Because I've been arrested twice and I was, my bail conditions wouldn't let me come here. Those criminal charges turned out to be completely bogus bunch of baloney. They've been thrown out. There was no crime there. Me putting the city council in Mickey Mouse ears is not a crime. It's public expression. I have a newsletter and sometimes you guys get it. I would offer all of you an email address of your own if you don't have one. I have, you know, um, I have sent some letters. I don't know if you've gotten them. I don't think they've been read. You're supposed to read those things. So I have a big lawsuit going and it's going to the 15th Circuit Court of Appeals. And among the many things I want to do is I want to throw out that last election because uh, a candidate was prevented from being on the ballot illegally. I also want to get a special master to protect our history. Because despite the fact we've had a historic district since 2017, you guys don't seem to understand what the word historic district means. James B. Maynor came west from Tennessee in 1832 with Sam Houston. That's our story. Sam Houston used to hang out at the homestead behind the Lions Club. We have to protect those properties. I'm going to try to get an injunction to halt all that building over there. Okay? You let them tear down 104 East Towns. I'm going to try to get that recreated to look like it used to. Okay? Now, Boyce Street over here, why do we want three-story, two-story live-work-play boxes over in the middle of a residential neighborhood? This building over here should never have been built there. Our history is what we have. That's all we have. Otherwise, we're just a subdivision, parking lot, warehouse park on the way from Houston to Austin. We need to get our character together. Our character is our history. James Maynor is not even mentioned on the website at the City of Maynor's history page. And it implies that the city was here because the railroad was here. The railroad came here because James Maynor gave the railroad half the lots in town. That's why they're here. It's not the other way around. Now, there's a few things on here that, uh, this whole notion of you guys having to do everything that the city council tells you is ridiculous. You actually are a commission. You can set your own agenda. You can have your own secretary. You can call town hall meetings. You can supply things to the budget. You guys have got to get proactive. You're not on a line underneath Scott Dunlap. Hi Scott. No, and Mr. Burrell is kind of in the middle. He's got a tough position. But we need to fall down on the side of the people. Which is one reason, the idea that you have the same project on here like four times, that's really not the goal of what we want. These things, we look at the planning and then people think about it and talk about, then they do the parcel or you know, I'm getting the order wrong, but it shouldn't all be in the same council meeting or planning meeting. Okay, so. HEB, they're one of the defendants in my lawsuit. Because basically, you guys gave them $20 million for that shopping center. That's 13100 FM 973 Inc. They're in the lawsuit too. I've got 40 defendants in there, 40. The people that are putting the townhomes next to the graves, on top of the graves, black graves. You know what I'm talking about? 95 townhomes there? They're on there too. Now that was dismissed without prejudice. My appeal, that's going to for sure get thrown out. We're not putting townhomes on top of black people's graves, okay? Any people's graves. In fact, speaking of planning, where's the next cemetery going? Oh, we, we never thought of that. Are we supposed to build a cemetery? People are going to die. We're going to have 100,000 people here within 15 years probably. Some of them might die. Here's another good question. Why are we spending? Why are we spending money to do a pedestrian bridge? Pardon me?
Your time's up.
How much? That's five minutes?
Yes, sir.
You're kidding? Oh my God. Gosh, I'm in shock. That was really five minutes?
Yes, sir.
I was just getting to the good part.
Thank you, Mr. Bataille. Moving on, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on subdivision concept plan for Maynor Downs Industrial being seven lots on 146.920 acres more or less and being TCAD personnel. 247972, 247974, and 247987. 247991, also known as 8916 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas. City staff.
Thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission. This item is for the Maynor Downs industrial development that has gone west along Hill Lane. Uh, it is intended to be seven lots, six being the actual lots for the industrial tenants that are planned to be there as well as one lot being conveyed to the city.
Any questions? No, sir. We don't have any speakers for this one.
Parliamentary inquiry, or request for, request for inquiry. Um, Mr. Battle has signed up to speak on the public hearings for the items one, two, three, and four. Uh, he spoke for five minutes on agenda and non-agenda items, however, he is, I believe he is still entitled based on our rules to speak for two minutes for each of the public hearings. Is that correct?
That is correct.
For each or for two minutes?
No, for each, each two minutes at each public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
If they, if they've signed up for it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bataille. Thank you, Mr. Bataille. And again, your name, sorry, for the record.
Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney.
And Commissioner Sensenfeld, thank you for letting me ask that question.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Bataille. You have two minutes for number one.
All right, thank you. Um. This, what I'm trying to figure out is, well, let me start by saying, Maynor Downs is the high point in the history of our town. Farm Aid ones and however many they did with Willie Nelson here, that was our shining moment. So no, we don't want to tear down all these buildings and put in another warehouse park. Oh boy, oh boy. I'd like to know when I get done with my two minutes, and this is a public hearing where it's supposed to be a back and forth, and I ask questions and you answer them. And we're trying to illuminate the facts here. I can't tell where Maynor Downs is on there. Where was the racetrack? Now, I like that you're going to put a little park over there, but what's going to be in it? Is it going to be another empty park like the other eight that we have that we have hundreds of thousands of dollars? We've got 100 million bucks in the bank. We can't even put in a ping pong table in 10 years. So I'm trying to figure out, is this basically an industrial park? All these are warehouses? Is that really what we think the future of Maynor is? How many more warehouses do we need? Well, we got to make money. No, we don't got to make money. We have tons of money. We have more money than we can spend. That's our problem, or not a problem. The problem is we don't know how to spend it. So my quest, my main question here is, where was Maynor Downs? I'd like to see the oval superimposed on there. I'd like to see a picture of what buildings are there still. Are the bleachers still there? How are the people that were citizens that you guys are supposed to be working for? How is anybody supposed to know what's going on from this one little map? And of course, it's on my computer. It's this big. You can't read one word on it. So, I guess I'm probably getting close to my two minutes, sir. That would be my main thing is that we need a plan that maintains Maynor Downs. I think it should be a semi-pro soccer team stadium.
Time's up, Mr. Bataille.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I can let the Planning and Zoning Commission know that the applicant is available for questions. Is there anything pertaining specifically to the lot layouts and things of that nature?
Hold on, Mr. Bataille. Uh, who is the applicant? I don't have a card for them. Oh.
She just recently arrived.
Can you walk up, please? Just state your name for us.
Uh, my name is Maggie Carion and I'm with Bowman.
We have any questions?
In the interest of parliamentary procedures, I move that we close the public hearing. As this is a public hearing, we can discuss questions in the business item. So I move to close the public hearing for item one.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioners Stetson and second by Commissioner Terry. All in favor? Moving on, public hearing, conducted public hearing on a subdivision preliminary plat for Maynor Downs Industrial being seven lots on 146.92 acres more or less and being beginning TCAD personnel, 247972, 247974, 247987, 247986, 247984, 247973, 477389, 247911, also known as 8916 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas. We do have Mr. Robert Bataille.
Thank you, sir. What you did just then was you, basically you threw out the whole concept of what a public hearing is all about. A public hearing is for me to stand here and ask the questions. I said, where was the original track? And I said, what are you going to do with the park? And you had the developer appear and you didn't even ask her. That's not what a public hearing is supposed to be. I hope we all understand that. A public hearing is where the public gets to hear what the hell's going on. Now, let me ask you this. Why in one map, property one is now property three? Building two over here wasn't a different parcel. Between these two maps, you have different numbers for the different parcels. Not different parcel numbers, but different lot numbers, building numbers. What's going to go in that park? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars are they going to put in there? What's going to be there? Soccer field? I think Maynor Downs, we need to not tear down those buildings. They need to be protected and retrofitted. And we need to have a big sign that says, "Maynor Downs." Or keep that name or something. We need things to do in our town. Does nobody understand this except me? We have an empty city, basically. It's becoming a giant parking lot. So, same question. Show me on the map where the oval of the racetrack was, please, and tell me what you're going to do for the park. Thank you.
Mr. Michael.
Uh, yes, this is the preliminary plat that follows in sequence from the concept plan. Uh, I can dive into the questions posed or we can save them for the business item. It is whatever you prefer.
We will see you in a moment on the business item, I believe. Uh, I will move to close the public hearing on item two.
I have a motion by Commissioners Stetson. Do I have a second? I have a second. I have a second by Commissioner Meyer. All in favor? Opposed? So, um, Ms. Ms. Attorney, so I have a question. So are we still waiting on public hearing number three and four? And since we, are we going to wait? Because we do have a speaker that would like to speak on those three and four.
Good evening, uh, Planning Commission members. Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney. On item, uh, three, it's my understanding that the applicant asked if you could delay. It's your, it's at your pleasure if you would like to table this item and move on to the next one. Um, or table both items and then move on and then open the public hearings. Or you can open the public hearing, keep it open, and then table it and move it, move on to the rest of your agenda, especially since there are folks that are wanting to speak and may not want to stay for the entire meeting.
Commissioners, we're going to, as the city attorney said, and city staff, please correct me. Agenda, um, public hearing three and four, we're going to, is this correct, postpone until the applicant shows up? Table it till she shows up. So that way, um, if there is a public hearing, the the community members that would wish to speak and be able to get questions and the applicant can hear the questions that are being asked by the community member. So basically what we're going to do is just table it so that away, if anybody in the community does have a question, the applicant will be able to hear your question instead of just talking now and then they don't get to hear your community questions or anybody's questions. So moving on, consent agenda item, all of the following items on this consent agenda are considered discussion to be self-explanatory by PNC Commission and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless requested by the chair or a commissioner in which the event, the items will be removed from the consent agenda considered, just considered separately. Consent agenda item. Consider discussion and possible action to approve the minutes for August 13th, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Session Meeting.
Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioners Stetson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nila. All in favor?
Opposed.
Regular agenda, consider discussion and possible action on subdivision concept plan for Maynor Downs Industrial being seven lots on 14.146.920 acres more or less and being TC, TCAD personnel, 247972, 247974, 247987, 247986, 247984, 247973, 477389, 247991, also known as 8916 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas. City staff.
Yes. Michael Burrell, Development Services Director for the City of Maynor. This is the concept plan for the Maynor Downs development that is going along. A little farther down west on Hill Lane. Uh, as for the racetrack, typically there are existing condition plan sheets included with the submittal, but in the spirit of what's approved, it's not common practice to have that overlay with what's being proposed. That is definitely something we can consider providing if deemed necessary, but it's just not common practice up to this point. Uh, regarding the parkland being conveyed to the city, per the development agreement in place, the developer is going to grade it to essentially prep it for use for the city to determine what that use will ultimately be. There are no finance plans in place, but there's been talk of an amphitheater, community space, just something that will kind of live up to the spirit of what Maynor Downs was back in its heyday. And the plan is just too preliminary at this point with power Leon and the development phases that the applicant is.
Mr. Burrell or Mr. Jones, uh, as far as like improvements or, or elements that can possibly go in that, on that lot seven, um, it's a small slope, so it, it doesn't seem like it would be that, that impeded from any kind of like structures or any kind of like even like an art installation in the area?
I can tell you what's been planned and what's been, uh, agreed to by the developer who, well, the city has worked with for almost a year and a half now. And, uh, we have agreements in place with the developers, uh, Dalphin Industrial. Um, they're planning on building, uh, over 850,000 square feet of industrial buildings, but they also have committed about a nine-acre park to the city. And they are going to, um, although it shows the, the current topo map shows that there is a quite, quite a swale there on that, uh, parkland dedication. They are going to deliver it to the city graded flat so that we can use it. And they are, um, the city's plans are to, um, make it into a park like an amphitheater and recreate a music venue there for Maynor Downs to, um, pay homage to the Maynor Downs that was there before. Um, so the, the, um, the racetrack and everything's, you know, not a viable business interest, uh, anymore. Um, so that, that part of it will go away, but we are trying to save the heritage of, and the name is going to be Maynor Downs for the, uh, industrial park as well. So we're going to keep that. We're going to try to keep the, uh, Maynor Downs image and we're going to try to keep the music venue there. So it will be something that the, you know, part of the heritage of the city of Maynor.
Mr. Jones, can, can improvements for that site utilize some of the funds that were the bond dollars or city funds that were set aside originally for doing the Timberland Park Plan that was bound to?
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
And, and we're, we're planning on, you know, some, some of the, uh, uh, we, we can potentially put in place, uh, TURS dollars and, and things like that that, that could be used to set aside for that.
For that terms.
Yeah, for development of that as well. Um, we do have in place, um, you know, economic development, um, agreements with, um, with that development group right now to help them out with first stages of that, but you know, you could put in place um, agreements for later on that would help develop that park. And, you know, at some point in time, we're going to have a Parks and Recreation Department that's kind of going to help out with some of that. But yeah, we, we haven't set the plans in place yet, but we have been working with the developer, um, on, on getting that. And they have agreed to donate that almost nine acres of land to, uh, the city as compen, additional compensation that they didn't have to do. So they've been generous in that. Uh, we, actually this track was not in the city of Maynor. It was, you know, a long time ago, I guess it was considered Maynor, but, uh, it was in the city of Austin. And, um, we, I actually made the calls to the developer back two years ago to ask them to consider de-annexation from the city, uh, from the Austin ETJ and ask them to consider annexation into the city of Maynor, which they ultimately did. And we got them to annex into the city and to, uh, you know, now, now they're owning the property and, and producing a plat and going to build some buildings because it was really low hanging fruit. They were close to, um, close to our utilities. They're actually on, on some of Austin utilities. And it was industrial type property that we could get into the city that quickly. Um, whereas we don't have to extend utilities to them. They're right there on utilities already and we don't have a big expense in bringing them in the city and getting some, uh, industrial businesses, manufacturing businesses, things like that, that we really need that will create jobs, um, for the citizens of Maynor. And, uh, so it was a win-win for everybody and, uh, in our books and city council looked at it that way as well.
And Mr. Jones, my last question for you, um, is regarding those utility easements that are on that property. And I know there's a lot of questions for nondiscretionary item, but I'm just trying to get my head on to this or are those, these are still, this is, this property, these parcels are still served by city of May, or city of Austin and Manville, I believe. No, uh, there's another, there's a third party, uh, for wastewater.
Right.
Um, so this is not going to be served by city of Maynor Utilities for water wastewater, but.
They have agreements outside.
Are there, I was going to ask you, are there ILAs or MOUs for those, um, ease, or easement agreements for those, um, utilities in the area?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I'm sorry, am I getting into my weird tone?
Let Pauline address the easements.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Pauline Gray with GBA, the City Engineer. Um, this site will be served by Maynor Wastewater. Um, they opted out, they got out of Austin for wastewater. Manville has a line large enough to serve them, so they're going to stay in Manville CCN. So there will be some easements for Manville on some of the properties. Yes.
And we have the agreement. Everything's.
Yes, we're working on that. Um, and there are some too because Hill Lane, that road's not being annexed into the city, so we have to work with the county. Yeah, the city doesn't want to yet wait till it gets approved, like improved and, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so there, there is a place. We've had meetings with Austin, Travis County, everybody to get everything squared away for that.
We're way down the list.
Yes.
All right. Well, I know how Tower Lane looks. It's, nobody wants that street either. So, I know. Thank you so much.
I have a question also. This property is basically a peninsula sticking out in the middle of Austin ETJ. What is the likelihood or possibility of the adjacent properties being annexed into Maynor?
We, we've been in discussion with the, um, track to the north, um, so doctor group out of Austin that owns that. And we've been talking to them. Um, we haven't gotten them over the line yet, but we're still talking to them. Um, there is a, um, track to, just to the east that we have been talking to as well. And, uh, uh, they wanted some multifamily zoning on that and it's not really something that the city council's, um, considered of right this second. Um, we've got a lot of multifamily being developed right now, so, um, uh, that, that's. now, so that that's, we haven't really chased that really hard, that's what they're wanting to develop, this particular landowner, and so we haven't chased that really hard, but the track to the north is a large, there's about eight hundred acres up there between two different owners, so we're still looking at that with that doc group, and so we're going to continue to pursue that, they just haven't let us know exactly how they're wanting to develop that yet, what type of uses they want to put on it, but we're still talking to them.
Yeah, we're just wondering about the long-term use by main rights for that park.
Yeah, well, it's it's, you know, kind of on the outskirts of Maynard, and, you know, we we have, they could have annexed it and not done anything, really, so we we went in while we were at it, we went in and asked them, you know, hey, what about donating this this land over here that, you know, you may have some use for, they could have, they could have graded it and put more warehouses on it, but we said while you're at it, we could use, we would like to pay homage to the Maynard Downs name, and we would like a place to do that, and why not have a music venue there, and they said, yeah, okay, well, we'll consider that, and so they thought about it a little bit and said, yeah, we'd be willing to do that, and and so we got a little, you know, extra, more than we planned on, and and it, you know, it helped, it was a good, I think it's a good thing for the city and would be able to actually build an amphitheater there, when and if that, you know, we get the funds to do that, but we're working on that, and I think the donation is going to be, I think within the first year of the construction, they're going to plan on the donation, and so we've got to work on the money to build a facility out there and do some planning and build a facility, but I think it'll be a good addition to the City of Maynard.
Is there sufficient room for an amphitheater and required parking?
I I think there will be, and they said they would allow cross parking on on their adjacent facilities, so they're going to have large warehouses out there and a lot of paving and such, and and, you know, most music venues, you know, facilities and events and things wouldn't be going on when they're having, you know, regular business hours anyway, so they would allow the cross parking when that happens.
I follow up on that. So you said cross parking would be the ideal, correct? Is there anything that papers an agreement like that between the developer and the City of Maynard for ensuring that in the future we'd be able to actually use it for that purpose?
No, but I think the developer would be. Yeah.
We just, we just have to stick to the site plan, we can't.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, because that was going to be my next question, I'm fortunate to be old enough to remember Farm Aid and how long that line was, yeah, that was a pretty long line, and Hill Lane hasn't got bigger yet. I I think my 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 comment would be, yeah, like I said, I was here long enough to see Farm Aid, and I and I do love, you know, it's like Maynard Downs was built on a community, and and a lot of people look forward to the racing because it did provide employment while they were here, but I do would love to see, like, like you said, how do we keep that, I know we can't keep that, the announcer caller building up there, but yeah, that that brown and Maynard Downs, it was, it was something to see when you when you drove downhill lane, and so, yeah, I would ever really love to keep it, keep it that way.
Yeah, I had friends of mine, you know, from college days that went, came from Dallas down here to see the Grateful Dead out there, so, that was a long time ago, but.
I believe we need to stay on topic, sorry.
Commissioners, we got any more questions? All right, this is nondiscretionary. Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
For a development of this type, what is the park requirement?
You'll have to forgive me, I don't remember parking ratios off the top of my head, they do have an estimated calculation of eight hundred parking spaces, but.
It depends on how much office they have.
It depends on floor, to like actual, like office floor to warehouse ratio to overhead garages, things of that nature.
They, we won't know until they, until they submit their plans for their office, yeah, because it's based on office, you don't have to, you don't have to have parking for warehouses, if you're just storing goods there, but it's how many people are going to inhabit, how many drivers you're going to have, and how many people you're going to inhabit the office space.
We're getting too too far deep into the site plan, that is a site plan question, but we can certainly provide that information to y'all separately.
All right, Commissioners, we have any more questions? All right, can I obtain a motion?
Thank you.
Commissioner, I approve, I move approval of item six.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor? Opposed? Six to one.
All right.
Moving on, regular agenda. Consideration and discussion and possible action on subdivision preliminary plat for Maynard Downs Industrial being seven lots on one four six point nine two zero acres more or less and being TCAD per se two four seven nine seven two, two four seven nine seven four, two four seven nine eight seven, two four seven nine eight six, two four seven nine eight four, two four seven nine seven three, four seven seven three eight nine, two four seven nine nine one, also known as eight nine one six Hill Lane, Maynard, Texas. Mr. Michael.
Yes, this is the preliminary plat that follows in sequence with the concept plan that was just heard, I believe we addressed the posed questions for this with the concept plan, but there was also a question of the lot layout, which I may be misunderstanding. The question is, it referred to different lots between the plans, but unless there's something I'm missing, there are building numbers, but lots one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven haven't changed unless I am mistaken, someone please tell me if I am, because I may be looking at the wrong thing perhaps.
Commissioners, do I have any questions? Can I obtain a motion?
Chair, I move approval of item seven as posted.
I have a I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor? Opposed? Six to one. All right, where, eight and nine are they?
The applicant is here, so if you would like to do the public hearings, we can proceed with that, or we can continue as planned and do that at the end, it's at your discretion.
Commissioners, I'm gonna move that we just continue going as we are, because we are going to pull, is this correct, Mr. Michael, and to your attorney, we are pulling a regular agenda item number eleven?
That is correct, the wrong address was placed on the agenda, it says three oh six East Wheeler is supposed to be three oh six West Eggleston, so this item will have to be pulled and come back with the corrected address.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to regular agenda item number ten, consider discussion and possible action on coordinating site plans amendment for HEB, Commissioners, to let you know, we do have Rebecca and Lindsay here from HEB, if you have any questions. Mr. Michael.
Yes, this is a amendment to the existing coordinated sign plan for HEB, there were some changes made to the plan as the initial design is not the same as what the building was initially planned for, one of those being the barbecue, so I am a little sad about that, but this just involved relocation of certain signage, slight changes in the actual square footage of certain signs of the plan, and then some additional directional signage, thanks for taking the parking, it's a very thorough plan as you can see from the massive amount of pages, but they are here to provide further context if there are any specific things you have inquiry over.
Just state your name for us.
Rebecca Wang with HEB, I'm just here to kind of, as you say, answer any questions that you guys have as we go through the plan. I also have Stratus with Maynard, the actual sign designer, so any technical questions will probably be pushed to them.
Commissioners, we have any questions?
Is anything about the sign plan amendment, like outside the scope or the rules for the signs that we allow in Maynard?
So the purpose of the coordinated sign plan is to allow for some deviation within reason from the code, but this is not starkly different from what was presented prior, it was just mainly a correction of signs that is needed and slight alterations to sizing and placement, location, I mean.
Mr. Burrow, I saw the seventy-five foot amendment or the the flag, the call out for the seventy-five foot amendment for this coordinated sign plan amendment, is that because of the the current fifty-five limit, but potential, the the council authorized and Commission also approved authorization to go to seventy-five feet for the main monument sign?
In the event of like a overpass, you mean?
I am on page eight of fifty-five where we have the the big pink circle, and it has seven, it's the multi-tenant developer, I saw it was highlighted, so that's why I was wondering if that's a modification to this, that's that's part of this amended amended site plan or amended coordinated site plan?
Not that we're aware of.
Pardon?
Not that we're aware of.
So the seventy-five feet is in the event of the overpass coming and blocking signage?
This is, yeah, this is included in here now because of the 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 unlocking clause that we have in the current coordinated sign plan for the major development, is that correct, or is that, is this separate, I'm so sorry, I'm confused.
I think I'm misunderstanding your question.
Is this allowing them to go and go to seventy-five feet now for the main monument, or is this just incorporating the staggered approach, the staggered approval, essentially the blanket approval we provided them based on the trigger of US two ninety or FM nine seventy-three being elevated? Currently, they're at fifty-five feet.
Commissioners, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, the seventy-five foot was already allowed, and it's part of the development agreement, development standards, and that has been approved previously, it's not part of what's being requested right now.
This is just essentially a call out, the monument that you're speaking of with that height is actually separate from HEB's coordinated sign plan?
It's putting, oh, okay, it's incorporating that, the broader coordinated sign plan for Maynard Crossing into HEB's coordinated sign plan that was approved prior to the the Maynard Crossing CSP. Thank you. Part and parcel, this is a piece of a bigger pie.
Yes, yes.
Got it, thank you.
My apologies for misunderstanding your question, I was.
I'm sorry for not being clear. And no, it's not, they're not authorized to go to seventy-five feet yet because that
That's correct.
There is not this going on at the at the intersection that we discussed, all right, well, thank you. I'll pull out a ruler tomorrow, otherwise.
All right, Commissioners, we got any more questions? I know we're all sad to see that barbecue sign go away, but, you know. All right, can I get a motion for agenda, regular agenda item number ten?
I move to approve agenda item number ten.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Meyer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Nathan, all in favor?
Opposed?
Motion passes. Regular agenda item number twelve, consider discussion and possible action on subdivision final plat for face three, section one of Shadow Glen, one hundred and eighty-three lots on fifty-five point eight three three acres more or less and being generally located to the northeast of the intersection of Great Maynard and Richter Loop, Maynard, Texas. See staff.
Yes, this is for Shadow Glen Face Three, section one has been reviewed for compliance by engineers in accordance with our ordinance, if you have any questions, she is available, but this is a discretionary item.
Commissioners, any questions? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve agenda item number twelve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nilla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meyer, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going back to public hearing number three. Conduct a public hearing on rezoning application for a one lot on point two three seven acres more or less and being TCAD per se two three eight 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 nine, also known as one hundred and one hundred and two East Parson Street, Maynard, Texas, from downtown business to C one like commercial, I do have Mr. Robert Battey for your two minutes, Mr. Battey.
Thank you, sir. I filed a Freedom of Information, Public Information Act request to find out who owned this property, because in my lawsuit, I'm trying to save our town and protect our history, and of course, that's the original Main Street of Maynard, and McKeel Inc., according to the TCAD, was out at such and such address, they tried to serve them there, and there was no one there, they'd never heard of them. So I filed a FOIA request, and I got a bill from the City of Maynard saying that if I want to find out who the owner is and get a copy of all the agreements, they think they should charge me three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, I think it was, and they actually had the, actually said it was going to take them eleven hours, and they wanted to charge me for making copies of six hundred pages. That's exorbitant, and yes, I am going to protest that with the Attorney Generals. This, once before, I think you decided not to grant this change of zoning because, A, that's a horrible place for people to try to get their gas. I happen to like that metal little building there, and I'd like to ask another question, here we are at a public hearing, and I'm a citizen, and I'm asking a question, and if you guys can't answer it, and the developers here, you need to get them to answer it, if they can. I'd like to know when that building was first there. I actually think that building would be really good, to recreate is like a, an old country store from like the nineteen twenties, and then put that Quonset hut sort, not the Quonset hut, but the metal building there as the blue front bar that used to be a really a night spot in town, and it could also be a visitor center for that area, tourists.
Thank you, sir. I'm assuming we went back to this, the? All right, Commissioners, we have any questions?
Chair, I move we close the public hearing on item three.
I have a motion to close public hearing item number three by Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meyer, all in favor?
Opposed?
Moving on, public hearing number four, conduct a public hearing on specific use permit for specific use permit. specific use permit for one lot on point two three seven acres more or less and being TCAD for sale two three eight 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 nine, also known as one hundred and one hundred and two East Parsons Street, Maynor, Texas from downtown business to C one light commercial. We do have Mr. Battey.
Chair, I have a request for information or a request for clarification from staff. This public hearing posting does not, the the language on the agenda does not list the type of specific use permit. The backup does. Can we get clarification of what? How we proceed with a public hearing that's on a specific use permit for a specific use permit?
They put specific use in there twice.
Thank you.
Commissioners Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. Agenda item is is properly worded. It's just for a specific use permit, and then the presentation in your summary form provides what the specific use permit is being sought for, and it does state in the summary that it is for a gas station.
Thank you for that. I believe my question will also pertain to item eight on the act, on the agenda posting for that item. I think that's where I flagged it also.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Sorry, not the, not, I was, I know, I'm looking at the presentation instead of the agenda now. Yes, the agenda of item eight for when we get to that item will have another discrepancy similar to this. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Battey, you ready?
Thank you. Yes, my name is Robert Battle, by the way. So this is a historic area, and we really don't need to go messing with it and try to quote modernize it. Now, the applicant also submitted these letters here. It says, "We have spoken with owners on the same block for a chance to work with them and make one awning around the entire premises. A cast iron awning that brings the entire shopping center a new feel." We're not trying to create a new feel. We're trying to recreate an old feel. No one's going to come down here to see ordinary. They want to come see historic. That will be a draw that's going to give our city an identity. And so once again, you did not quite answer my questions. I'd like to know who the owner is and how to contact them so that they can be served and become part of my lawsuit. Because we have to protect that whole area. We have a historic district there, and we also have incentives to get to pay people with deductions on their building permits for recreating things and restoring things. So these things have to work in concert with each other, and what we don't need are these comprehensive plan, bunch of baloney downtown plan that is the most ridiculous bunch of stuff. I cannot believe that you guys approved the comprehensive plan and the second downtown plan. This is not a commercial corridor, okay? It's not ever going, it needs to not be a commercial corridor. Traffic needs to go around Maynor. It needs to go nine, nine seventy-three needs to go down there, and Parsons or, excuse me, Palmer goes over there. This is not your commercial corridor. Now, there's somebody living in the building next to Relax Inn, living there. That's not zone for living. That's a grocery store. It should be an antique store or something. People don't get to live there.
Thank you, Mr. Battey.
I like your warning sign there. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Neela. All in favor?
Oppose.
Motion passes. Moving on, moving on. Moving on. Oh, I just went past. Regular agenda item. Consider discussion and possible action on rezoning application for one lot. Is that correct? Yes. On one lot, point two three seven acres more or less and being TCAD for sale two three eight 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 nine, also known as one hundred and one hundred and two Parsons Street, Maynor, Texas from downtown business to C one light commercial. Commissioners, we do have Christian Garcia and his team here for any questions or that you may ask. Christian?
If I give you, I have some sheets. Do I give that to you right now or?
Are these these?
Oh, yeah, I guess you print it here. Yeah.
So we have, just state your name for us.
Christian Garcia.
And what is your, what is your title?
Architect, I'm the potential architect that we get something.
All right, Mr. Michael.
Yes, this rezoning request is for the Maynor Grocery. As we're all aware, this item did come before us back in December twenty-four, and it was initially denied. They are bringing this request back with the intent of again, trying to reinstate the gas station use. Gone to the drawing board. They have tried to come up with some additional improvements as well as some quantifiable numbers for the investment that they intend to place in this area of downtown. And they've worked with staff to kind of convey these messages, particularly Mr. Jones, as he will be the one looking at the economic development aspect of it. And they are available for questions as his staff.
I believe you have a presentation for us, Mr. Christian.
Yes. With with the, pretty much you're trying to reopen the Maynor Grocery, keep it the way it is. Pretty much some historic pictures of it. The thing, I think last time that we came and I presented something to you guys, my drawings, my renderings were very modern, and I was told no. So I went back into the drawing board, and we're going to keep that white old stone that we have, a brick that we have. The biggest thing that I guess is bothering the city is that metal building in the front that we just, it's just no use. We're going to knock it down. And we want to re-move the the gas, the gas canopy towards the center and also towards the back, which is what we have right now. So that one-story metal building, knock it down. Move the canopy with the gas pumps towards the center of it. Which technically this is what we have vision right now. That's also working with the rest of the shopping center. The only thing that we pretty much have spoken, even with the city, is doing one awning all around it, bringing it a bit more into this is ones that we did right now. This is the front of the Maynor Grocery. And this was be the, I guess, the highway twenty. This is, pretty much this is the only thing that we want to do is adding the awning, making it one entire height on just the the whole thing around. And then the back right now, as you can see, this is facing the, where the park is at. So where we want to put is outdoor seating where people could go in there, grab some coffee or whatever it is. We do want to work with a coffee shop or a local coffee. And then so people could, you know, walking their kids or something, grab a cup of coffee, sit down there, nice weather, especially now that we're, it's not as hot. This is pretty much what we have in mind right now. Still keep the two gas pumps that we have. It's just given that entire strip. Once we take that metal building down, it's pretty much. I'm not sure if this could play. Is that? This, this is a video. I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. Just so you guys get a slight visual of what we are thinking per se. And that's with the park in the back. And again, people walk in, there's, we have apartments on the on the side. So again, keeping that old white brick that we have right now, and it just reopening, have fresh produce, fresh meats. But again, with that awning, we're working with the with the other owners on the store. And we'll have parking towards a, towards a park place, so that alleyway. We want to help work with the city so we could fix it. I don't know if you guys driven through there. It's, we need to put money into it. So we're, we are wanting to invest in that as well, just clear that entire Backstreet Alley out. I'm not sure. There's, I think, two more slides of. And this is somewhat of what we have in mind. It's cast iron awning with sitting in the back, keeping the same visual that we have right now, not changing so much. Just what we want is just reopening that grocery man, grocery manor out and bringing it back, bless you, bringing it back to the to the public here. And this is where highway twenty is correct. Obviously, right now we put it all white, but if the other owners don't want to do that, keep the, you know, the colors that they have right now, then that's totally fine. But it just gives it a better visual, better because it is a main street.
Commissioners, any questions?
I do, and I'll get to the question about the pumps in the next item. Because I have questions still. I know you're back with that. By the way, welcome back. From someone, from a planning and zoning commissioner perspective, I appreciate the integration of the block and looking at that being all C one. I understand that, and and also keeping that that north-facing orientation of the north-facing door that was not, that was more of a secondary door.
Correct.
The last design you brought forward is a, is a nod to that, I think, advice that we kind of gave of respecting kind of the Parsons Street side. I I'm very curious about, I guess I will talk a little bit about the pumps that you're showing there, you know, absent of the SUP discussion. Weird question, but are your vents going to be anywhere near that seating area?
I'm sorry?
Are the vents for the tanks going to be, like, where are those?
There's going to be in towards the left, technically where they have the, where they are right now, because they're they're away from if you see, if you see the, if you if you picture the the corner.
Then the southwest parcel, southwest corner of the parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Near the blade, near the blade for the
Correct.
Shell blade. Okay.
Yes.
Sign. Okay. And you have, and my other concern is you have a lot, like, I got to drive through, drive past the new Maynor Crossing sign this morning, and I got to see a lovely officer pull over, one of the three people that ran a U-turn on a left turn lonely lane with a no U-turn sign this morning.
Okay.
At at seven thirty in the morning. So we're doing real great. And so I I'm curious about the faith you have. I'm concerned about the the Parsons in ingress and egress, the right and right out, and also technically the alley left in, left out. I I don't, I I, that's a lot of faith to put in people to not go against traffic. And it's going to kind of put a lot of load, I I see that as putting a lot of load on AP, pardon me, MPD to enforce left in, left out.
So we've been working, I think, also with Scott, Mr. Scott, and
Okay.
Trying to do a one-way on that alley, just straight down. If you want to come back around, technically it's going to take time for people to get used to it, but with signs and all that.
A nudge. Okay. Would you be able to serve, like, would this still function without the Parsons Street, pardon me, without the Lexington Ingress Egress?
It will be a one-way in, one-way out. I mean, technically it will.
But it's dead ending into a pump. Like, it's coming into the pump. It it's hitting right there at the pump. Like, your north, your northern MPD is right there at the ingress. So it's going to, if someone's in that space, you have a fifty-foot lot or sixty-foot lot there. You know, you have a fifty-foot lot to work with. And your pump's in the middle with with twenty feet on each side. So you're only going to have a very small buffer, like if I'm worried about, I'm worried about queuing into into onto nine seventy-three Lexington Street.
So you're saying not have an entrance or?
Correct. Would you be able, would this parcel be able to survive without that that ingress egress there onto Lexington, where it's only on Parsons and only on the alley?
Yeah, I mean, it will. We think it will. Once, if we, I mean, if we don't put an entrance there, the only thing we could do is maybe bring the canopy more towards it. But right now it's not in the center. It's more to the, towards the end. So bringing more to the center, yes, will.
Okay.
Very good work.
And Steph, tell me if I'm getting into site plan. Am I, is that, am I touching on site plan by asking about driveway access, driveway easements, or no?
This is the time because it's a specific use permit, the actual.
Oh, that'll be the last one.
So this is zoning, so you're getting a little ahead, but specific use permit, yes, you can ask.
All right. I am done with all my questions, and thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Meyer?
I'm, as before, I'm concerned about the ingress and egress on that corner because of the traffic. And I don't see anything in C one zoning that additionally that isn't already there that I care to support.
I had a question as well about ingress and egress. I hate traffic a lot. I hate it so much, I wouldn't do it as a career to eradicate it. I also have the pleasure of driving right in front of this site every day to go to work. So it looked like some of the restrictions on the driveway access, I know you're an architect.
I'm sorry?
I said, I know you're an architect. I won't hold that against you. But it looked like in the original versions, there was restrictions being made about both exiting onto highway twenty and to and from the alley, making it one-way. You talked about that. I don't recall if there was a version of that that restricted access out. So egress out onto Lexington. Is that still the plan to restrict certain movements, especially outbound movements from the?
The, I'm sorry, the first time that we actually, that that I presented this to you, what we had was three gas pumps. So off the back, you're adding an extra, I think it was like twenty-five feet, or I'm not mistaken, if I remember, on the actual canopy. And so it takes more, obviously more space. So that will definitely be more congested. I mean, because per se, we're taking as each pump will be a parking space per se. So now if we add another pump, it'll be six. So I, we, we think that we're four. And I think we will be able even to make it work if we take out the entrance on the Lexington. If we just have one entrance and one exit, I feel like it it will still make it work.
So I guess then that instance, you would be having one-way access like you discussed. Is that correct?
Pretty much.
And it would be from south to north, so from the alley to highway twenty? Is that the idea?
From, you took. On the alley or which one?
Two-way on, or two-way on highway twenty. Right, so, to, okay, so inbound, outbound on highway twenty, we're talking about removing, you know, the Lexington side. Okay, so then you have inbound and outbound on the alley as well, correct?
Correct. Well, if you come in through the alley and you get into it, then you can't, well, we have it, well, we have it, you can't make a left towards highway twenty. It's making a right.
That was my question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. So then practically, how would you limit people from making a left onto highway twenty westbound?
It's going to be hard, but we signage, that's what we feel, but light it up signage, signage, and all that turn, and that's.
It is hard. I agree. Yeah, that that to me, just knowing what I know, people will make a left out onto highway twenty all the time. So, yeah, it's, it's a it's a hard sell to me personally. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Burrell, so on the, on the zoning piece, the switch from downtown business to light commercial, basically it eliminates condominium and multifamily and adds some additional permitted or conditional uses for light commercial. Is that correct?
Yes.
But with, so the the change in the zoning doesn't affect their ability to do. Affect their ability to do what they wanna do other than the gas pumps. Is that right?
Yes, sir. The intent of the rezoning is to allow for a gas station use.
And could this project like move forward with, like, could you do what you wanna do without the gas pumps? Or is the gas pumps kind of a make or break deal?
For the owners, yes. It's, it's a, it's either we knock out the, the pump, the canopy, that's, it's, it's just. We need to knock it down and the metal building and make it, uh, you know, at least two pumps. But yeah. I mean, if we don't get anything, then owners will just leave the metal building, leave the pumps and just not touch anything that.
So without, without reinstating the gas pumps, then you're saying the owners will, it'll just sit there and continue to decay?
They feel like they won't make any investment or, or, which in reality, to bring those pumps back to life. Or, you know, uh, it's gonna require them to put a lot of money into it, but without that, it's, they don't think. Even with, just with the grocery store, they're, eh, if any would add like a coffee business there for people to come in the back, in the. Towards the co- uh, where the park is at, they don't, they don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, I, I do like where you're going, cause it, like I said before, being here as long as I have, it was Maynor Groceries. And there was a reason it was called Maynor Groceries is because of the grocery park. Uh, my grandparents and a lot of people that I know use it as a grocery store, you know? We didn't have the luxury of the toll rolling, getting to Austin, but, uh. The, the big thing is, I, I think what we're hearing is, is, is the gas pumps. One thing I know about being in this community, we're growing as fast as we can and stuff is coming left and right. The owners do understand that there is a gas station. What is it point something miles away from them and then. You know, like we did, we did tell the last person that, um, you know, HEB is coming. So we do understand that majority of the gas pump may be used by just regular hometown people. The elderly people or who just people that live in Maynor. Um, so, um. I, I love the concept. I love what you're doing and it, it makes me, you know. I do have the same. I hate to see the furniture building go. That's what it was.
They have a bunch of, if you walk in, there's.
It, that's just my input is, you know, it's, we all live here. We see the traffic. We know the headache and. That one thing is that, is, is not discouraging, but it's kinda like, hey, you know, you're, you're getting there. But we do understand our community and we do understand, uh, because that store on nine seventy-three. Yes, it's only, it has a drive out to go one way and these people are turning at seven thirty in the morning left instead of going right. So, um, just, I think what, what my team is saying is just fair warning that, you know, if we approve this. What may be happening is, you know, it, it may be limited to use, but, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. But I do love the concept of the grocery store. Um, my only opinion, and I know I can only give an opinion is. Leave the lettering red, cause it's always been like that. Commissioners, we got any other questions? Okay. I would, I would tell you it's okay to sit down, but I know you're getting ready. We'll call you right back up, so one second. All right, commissioners, any, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion, commissioners?
We're just on the zoning portion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I would move to approve agenda item number, whatever, the zoning. The rezoning from, uh, downtown business to light commercial.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Terry. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Nila. All in favor? Oppose? Three to four, motion fails. Moving on to consider, pardon, moving on to.
I believe.
Go ahead.
The Assistant City Attorney would like to say something.
Yes, ma'am. Four was no, opposed.
Who was a, who was, who was?
Three was four, four was opposed. Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind calling the role for the opposition, just for record?
Four was Commissioner Terry. Is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Commissioner Nila and Chair Pies. Yes, right. Moving on, consider discussion and possible action. On a specific use permit for.
Point of order, this, uh, specific use permit is invalid or is, is, is not able to be acted on because of the zoning. Correct?
Commissioners Veronica Rivera, Assistant, um, City Attorney. So because you did not approve the rezoning, um, the, that is a recommendation that would go to city council. City council still has the right to do a super majority vote. So the SUP, the recommendation is to postpone until your next meeting. Since the public hearing was already heard or at your discretion, you can pull the item. And then you would need to have a new public hearing and notifications. So.
So.
You can postpone if that's what you'd like, if that is the motion that you'd like to do. Or you can just pull the item and then that would require new notifications. A new public hearing.
Hearing.
Right, so you've already had a.
Correct. And a public notice for the public hearing that would be sent to the adjacent property owners with the three hundred.
Right, it would be new again.
Yes.
Yes, this was already done and so you can postpone.
Postponement would not require a re-notification of the parcels.
Correct.
In the, oh, thank you.
So do we have to take a vote on what we do or?
Yes, sir. You can either, um, postpone or have it pulled.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to ask for a motion to postpone and if it doesn't carry, then the item is gonna be pulled.
Okay. All right, commissioners, um, do I have a motion for the, uh, regular agenda item? Number nine to be postponed. Is that correct?
I move to postpone agenda item nine to the next commission meeting.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Nathan. All in favor?
Questioning?
Yes, sir.
So it's gonna be postponed until the next meeting, granted if the city council has a super majority. Vote to up, override it, right?
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So city council would have to vote unanimously for us, super majority for us to see it again. If they don't, we won't see it again. Is that correct?
So that it's captured on the video.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what would happen is that if there is no super majority by the city council on first reading, because it's first reading, then you go to se- on the second reading. Then, um, you would, um, you would still see it on the agenda because you're asking for a postponement on a date certain. But then, um, city staff would let you know that that item is pulled. You would need, you would be presented with what took place. Why it's being pulled instead of y'all later.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, first chair?
Yes, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stetson and a second by, I'm sorry. Commissioner. Oh, Mr. Albert? No. Yeah, Commissioner Nathan.
Yep.
Do I have all in favor? Oppose?
Six to one.
All right. Do I have a motion for the planning and zoning meeting? To be adjourned at seven fifty-seven?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Chavis. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Stetson. All in favor?